And next item.
Discussion item, boundary line changes, school of choice and boundary line exemption, Dearborn High School addition, Dr. Maleko, Mr. Wall, and Ms. Ali Bazey.
Carol asks the team to come on up.
And Mr. Mashur.
Mr. Mashur, you're always.
If you want me to.
I've never seen a smile this big on his face.
I think we should always have board meetings the Monday after the Michigan-Michigan State.
Oh, stop.
I think it's the best time to have a board meeting.
I think we could use him to sit down.
So I'm the opening act, but Mr. Mashur will definitely be the main act and the highlight of the show.
That's what he thinks.
That's what he thinks. So as of May 1st, the board direction was to eliminate, I'm just going to recap where we've been so far. So forgive me if it sounds repetitive, but it's for the sake of keeping everyone up to date. Board direction on May 1st was to eliminate school of choice, explore the Dearborn High expansion, which we've completed as well. We had Plant Moran and Middle Cities enrollment projection studies were approved, and they were presented at the August 29th board study session. On August 29th, we had a board study session, and the direction we were given was to move forward with planning for classrooms and a cafeteria addition at Dearborn High, limited expansion, moving forward with planning for the potential boundary changes, options being presented at the September 11th board meeting. Community meetings being planned to provide information on enrollment, share options with parents, and solicit feedback. We had a time, oh, thank you, we had a timeline that we visit each time. We are currently approaching stakeholder communication meetings with, which David will touch on just a little later, and also Mr. Hassan Jafer. So Mr. David Mustin and Mr. Hassan Jafer will be taking the lead with the community On August 29th, also at the board study session, we had direction to move forward with the planning and exploring of some additional classrooms, fieldhouse, possible fieldhouse at Edsel Ford, as boundary changes would also require some expansion there as well. Also explore the expansion of the Dearborn Heights Berry Center, career and technical programs as well. The board did not give permission to pursue a 9th grade academy for Fortson and removed that option at the board study session. The board also did not give permission to pursue exploration of a 4th high school and also removed that option. The board did not give permission to build an additional, to build additional classrooms beyond the four that I referenced earlier at Dearborn High. September 11th board meeting, the board gave us direction to get some information on the number of students that would be impacted by the boundary line changes under the options that were presented. There were three options presented at the September 11th board meeting. In addition, Abe also, we said that he would be, Mr. Mashur would be providing, sharing a fourth option at this current meeting today, October 9th. And we also had direction to move forward with the architectural designs at Edsel, and Dearborn High is part of the options. We were also given direction to move forward with architectural designs at Edsel, and Dearborn High is part of those options which were presented at the September 11th meeting. Further details about the transportation costs, specifically, a question was asked about long to the Dearborn High area. I believe that information was presented with board briefs, but we can also speak to it. Mr. Mark Andrews is here as well from Transportation, our Transportation Director. And that's all of my part.
Okay, so we had looked at different options. Scenario one, and really, again, to remind everybody, a couple of things we were looking at. Number one is feeders. We didn't want to split up as many students, as many buildings as we currently have split up. The other thing is, we have to transport kids. There's just no way around it. And part of my, the fourth one, the fourth option, which we will get to, I was hoping to reduce transportation significantly, but we really, we really can't. You're either going to move kids from one neighborhood to Edsel Ford, or from one neighborhood to Dearborn High, or whatever. So there's really no way around the transportation situation, unfortunately, so. But again, just to give you some different options, some different things to look at. When you look at scenario one, to remind everybody, that's where Smith, who was only sending, and that's the other thing, too, is currently, right now, we have, like, for example, at Dearborn High, you have all of Bryant, you have part of Smith, part of Eunice, part of Stout that go to Dearborn High, and we just wanted to clean some of that up, try to make the splits a little bit more, more even. Edsel Ford would have Salina Stout, part of Woodworth, and then Fortson would have all of Lori, all of Eunice. Currently, Eunice, as I said, is split, and then most of Woodworth. Problem with this is Fortson's still going to be high, 2780. Edsel Ford and Dearborn High are a little bit more balanced there with the 1900 and 1880. That's, that's our scenario one. Scenario two has pretty much very similar, similar to what we currently have. So you'd have the same 40 students every year from Smith staying at Dearborn High. You'd have the same 125 students every year staying at Dearborn High. We would just have the Eunice kids, which were about 40 per year. We'd have them transferring to Fortson, so all of Eunice would go to Fortson in scenario two. Woodworth, we took a little bit bigger chunk from, from Woodworth that would go to Fortson, and then the same 50 students that would be north, west of Greenfield would, would be at Edsel Ford.
Those two slides show the same numbers for Woodworth, go into the two schools.
Right, yeah, but what I'm, yes, when I say a bigger, not a bigger chunk than the first one, but the bigger, the larger of the population from Woodworth, was that what I, was what I mean, would go to Edsel? And you would still have the same 50 as in scenario one.
But in the, oh, hold on, am I looking at the wrong slides?
Two, not right now.
Possible solutions, scenario number one, and possible solution scenario number two, Woodworth.
Is the same.
Right.
Right.
But I'm looking at the number for Fortson, and it didn't change, even though the Eunice kids would be going there in solution two. So that number should have increased.
You're absolutely right. So we would, we would have to add.
160 to Fortson.
Correct, and then we take that away from Dearborn High. So Dearborn High would be at 1740. Yep, good catch.
That's number two?
Uh, number two, yes. The Fortson population would be up by 160.
160, taking it to 2940.
Yeah.
Thank you, Trustee Thorpe, for being all over that.
I'm a numbers guy.
I know. Your addition is really good, thanks.
Well, I'm not.
Yeah.
No. Okay, sorry about that. All right, anyhow, so scenario three, we get to scenario three.
Yeah, so that slide definitely needs to be corrected.
And then really, if you.
That, that is persuasive to me. I, I just hate to see that number at Fortson.
Yeah, and I was going to say, so if scenario two is going to look like we have just under 3,000 at Fortson, with the influx of people coming in and so on, we definitely don't want to be there, so we could almost scrap, in my opinion, scenario two.
This was the same solution, the same scenario number two is the one that we had not liked last.
Right, that was our least favorite.
That was your least favorite of the three, from what I was.
But now it's even more least favorite, yeah.
It was my least favorite as well, if that means anything. All right, scenario three, we have, we have Smith staying at Edsel Ford, as opposed to them going to Dearborn High. So we'd have, all of Smith would be at Edsel Ford. Stout would still have the same representation at Dearborn High. Eunice would have the same representation as it currently does at Dearborn High. And we take the 50 kids from Wood, from Fortson, rather, that are, that currently go, currently go from Woodworth to Fortson, we take those 50 students per year and have them at Edsel Ford, and then that's what our numbers would look like there. And then scenario four. Scenario four keeps Bryant and Smith at Dearborn High. That's similar to scenario one. Salina Stout, Stout, that whole, the entire neighborhood of Stout, this entire neighborhood, basically here, the Snow neighborhood, Whitmore Bowles kids, that we do get, you know, a few, a small portion of them that go to Stout. Those students will all go to, to Edsel Ford. And then Woodworth, with the help of my, my good friend and colleague, Mark Andrews, we kept basically trying to say, okay, we kept moving the boundary line further and further north in order to get the numbers to match up and still make it obviously a reasonable split for, for Woodworth. Because, you know, as much as the numbers are important, so are the people, so we have to take that into consideration.
So is it split at a main street, or is it split down the middle of a residential?
No, it's split, it's split at a residential. Which, which one was it, when we got to the 190? It's, I know south, north of Colson.
South of Ruby.
Ruby.
You got all of Henry Ford.
Yeah. So, but that was the consistent thing. It was, it was south of Ruby, but the, the consistent thing was, was all, we got all of Henry Ford Elementary, basically, as opposed to only a portion of it. In scenario four, all of Henry Ford Elementary that goes to Woodworth would go to Edsel Ford. All of William Ford Elementary that goes to Woodworth would go to Fortson. And then Miller, which is currently split, would be, would still be split. But then, but it would be split at a different street, as opposed to it is now.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm just asking, because I really hate weaving through neighborhoods when you're splitting a street and one side goes to one school and one, Beach Park and ona are a pretty good example of that. So, thank you.
It's, it's not a, Ruby isn't a main street, like Ford Road or Michigan Ave, obviously.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I know Ruby. It's kind of a big one.
Right.
Still, it's neighborhood.
Right, exactly. Okay, and then Stout would have, you know, the 125 students that live in this area that would go to, I'm sorry, that would live right around Fortson, that would go to, to Fortson.
The Maple students.
So we would eliminate, I'm sorry?
Maple students.
Correct, correct. We would eliminate a couple of buses in this scenario, but it's, it's going to shift a lot of the busing as well. So we had, for example, right now, our busing is pretty much split between Dearborn High and Edsel Ford. In this scenario, you're increasing busing tremendously at Edsel Ford, it'd go almost double, and other, but we'd have a lot less busing at Dearborn High. It'd have maybe only about four buses, Mark, at Dearborn High, this one, if I remember.
That'd be correct.
Yeah. But Edsel Ford would go from like 10 buses to 21, but overall, it would reduce our busing by a couple of buses.
A question on the busing. I can think of it, and I don't think it really particularly matters, but at Fortson, busing is, is to be avoided.
Correct.
At Edsel and Dearborn, I assume it's kind of a wash. They're both on pretty good sized roads. Rotunda's probably the better of the two, but probably doesn't make much of a difference as far as turning and getting buses in, or not really?
No, not really.
Okay.
Actually, Edsel Ford has the best scenario for fitting the buses behind the school.
Right, okay, thank you.
Okay. My next question was, and this would go to you, Mark. When, when you did the breakdown of the busing, because I had the question, we've had for many, many years, the complaint from the parents from the Long Neighborhood about their students getting to Edsel. Now we're asking them, and I don't know how much more distance-wise this is from where they live to get to Dearborn High. But, and I know that there's always a concern, you're setting a precedent, but we already set a precedence with a lot of our busing, when we were, when we're busing, you know, and I know it's because there's not sidewalks, you know, for the Maple students to go to Dearborn High, to cross over Southfield, and for Salina students to go to Edsel, to cross over South, because there's, it's, the walkability is not the same as the Long Neighborhood. But still, if I had a 9th grader traveling, and I'm telling them, we're changing your , but, and they're not, we already know that they're, have real issues with their students walking in the middle of, you know, 6:30 in the morning, on a winter morning, to get to Edsel. Now we're sending them all the way to Dearborn High. How much of a distance is that? And if we're, because every scenario we have, well, I guess three, we don't have them going there. If it was only just that, we, I can justify, in my mind, adding two buses for those students. If it's, if we're adding an extra mile, or even three quarters of a mile, or whatever, for those students to have to travel in the middle of the winter hours, you know, kind of thing. Do we know how much more of a distance this is?
I don't offhand, not exact distance. I gotta say, off the top of my mind, if I had to answer you today, would be that it might be shorter in distance, but it definitely would be a different route for the students to walk to.
Right. If it was, that's what I really need to know, is what the actual change in, in distance was. Because we had this problem when I was on the Boundary Task Force many years ago, and we, we actually, a lot of us got into our cars and started driving different routes to see how much time-wise and traffic-wise and all that kind of stuff, it was going to shift if we took particular boundaries.
Yeah, I can definitely find out a distance.
So, yeah, I kind of like to understand what we were asking of our students and their parents with that scenario.
Yeah, that's a good question. I can find that out for you.
Thank you.
Are we all set?
No, I was just trying to Google Dearborn High.
I'm looking it up right now.
Yeah, I was just doing that.
I'm looking at a map right now. It depends on the, on the house.
If you, if I'm going from Long Elementary to Dearborn High, I think I saw 2.4 miles. To Edsel Ford, it is 3.4 miles.
Yeah.
From the building to the building.
I can tell you from my school of choice, boundary line exemption experience, that sometimes the house is actually closer to Dearborn High than it is to Edsel Ford.
Yeah, and I, I don't know, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
Yeah, it just depends on, you know, where, where the home is. Sometimes it's a little bit further. Is it going to be significantly further? I don't, I think it'll be all within a half a mile for, for most of the houses. It doesn't, I haven't run across any that are, that are, you know, that are outliers to that extent, where they're like a mile difference to, to Dearborn High.
Well, are we still?
But we did eliminate a couple buses, so.
I was going to say, if we eliminated a couple buses, are we still planning on busing the Dearborn Heights students to Dearborn High?
Yes.
Well, see, now, how do we justify them?
Again, it's because of main streets that they have to cross.
But they're, but they're basically the same, in my opinion, as what the Long Neighborhood would be from the other end.
You know, unfortunately, that's a question that Abe or I wouldn't be able to answer, because the, right now, for our high schools, it's safety busing only. There's no certain distance that the students have to walk to, or be further out. And that committee, from what I was told, was formed over 20 years ago, so it's something that we could explore and put another committee together. But right now, unfortunately, even my predecessor wasn't involved in that committee that set these current standards.
You're referring to the policy.
Correct.
Correct. Like, so who gets bussed and who doesn't?
Yeah, no, I get that.
That predates.
But still, some of those students.
Yeah, I'm trying to remember when we had the conversation, when we left it like that, why we justified it then to continue, because we had a lot of busing conversation back then with the last boundary change in 20.
Some of the standards were if the students had a crossing river. Some of them were if they didn't have a sidewalk all the way to the school.
It was usually a sidewalk situation.
And some of them were, some of them were like, Southfield Road was a big one. That's why a lot of students on that side, on the east side of Southfield get transportation.
But I, all I'm saying is the Dearborn Heights side, the River Oaks.
Correct.
They're a long telegraph and, and along.
The River Oaks, north of, north of Warren.
North of Ford Road.
You're talking about sidewalks.
We transport everybody north of Ford Road.
Yeah, there's sidewalks, there's, it's, it's no different than, to me, than the Long Neighborhood with, you know, the walkability of it. So there must have been some other reason why we accommodated that. I just want to make sure what, what, when I'm being approached by parents, that we, that we have, you know, the answers that make sense.
And I, and I don't think that it's something that you, we can't change. I mean, you can take a look at it and say, you know, it makes sense for us to bus these students over, and then we can go from there. It doesn't, just because we're changing the boundaries, doesn't mean we can't change anything else.
Right, that's why I want to, that's why I want to have, know that I'm, that I've got this whole thing kind of clear in my mind about what we're doing with our choices, and then how it's going to impact, and what our other options are to go along with that.
Also, the other thing is, if you start adding bus routes, it sounded like, what is it, what, 100,000 for two bus routes?
54.
54 per.
Yeah.
100,000 for two bus routes.
Right, for two.
I mean, if you started more buses, if.
No, in this scenario, we're reducing busing, so if you're going to, busing for the kids that we would currently bus.
They wouldn't be bused anymore.
Right.
I did want to ask, Trustee Thorpe, what map he's looking at. Did you say 3.9?
I was just on Google Maps, and I was seeing about 3.2 from Long to Edsel, and 2.4 from Long to Dearborn.
Because I got 2.6 and 2.9, and I'm on Google Maps, too.
That's, that's closer to.
It's very close. That sounds right.
Like I said, it's usually about a half a mile difference for, for the two, for most of the homes that.
Home-wise, that could make a difference.
Right.
Yeah, it's very, very small, otherwise, yeah.
He's a numbers guy, not a maps guy. Big difference.
It's not my fault, it's Google's fault. Can't trust Google.
Okay.
Big data.
Okay, so where are we, where are we at? Dr. Maleko?
I mean, would the board like us to put, bring a review of the Transportation Safety Committee together?
It would be one entirely new committee, because from looking at that committee book, and I'm not trying to be funny, but some of the people are deceased, some are retired, you know, there's, there's nobody, there isn't a single name of anyone that was on that committee that is still either employed by the Dearborn Police or by the Dearborn Schools.
Well, we could, you know, bring a review and update, and maybe the final recommendation of the committee, the new committee, may be that continue as is, but with the boundary, maybe there'll be some other recommendations or other things, because obviously, in that amount of time, the infrastructure of the city has changed, and the schools have changed, as you mentioned, paths to school, or sidewalks and other things.
I think an update is necessary in this case.
Yeah, no different than the Policy Committee reviewing all our old policies. You're saying this is 20-some years old?
Yes.
But I think it's independent of our discussion on the boundaries.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
So I think that sounds like a, a yes.
Yeah, I think that would, would be useful, and like Jim said, it, we're going to move ahead with our boundary decisions regardless of where, where we end up with the busing decision, but I think doing it now makes sense.
It was one of the options, two years ago, when I first became superintendent, we, or two and a half years ago now, we put together a committee that was led by Mesa Malibazey on reviewing transportation with Ruth Bankhead, and that was one of the options that was in there, that we want to review some of that safety busing before Mr. Andrews was in his position. Thank you for the direction of the board.
Okay, so where are we at as far as decisions? Let's review that.
Can, can we?
Oh, Trustee Nasser, yeah.
Last time, we had three options, and we said we wanted to give all three options to the public. But now we have four options, and I think giving them four options.
Well, three, because we get rid of two.
Oh, we are getting rid of two.
Well, I mean. No, we haven't said that yet, but.
Well, that's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to get.
You want to keep Fortson at 3,000?
No.
Okay, does anybody want to keep number two on the table?
No.
No.
Okay. So now we're ready because the numbers changed.
So now we've got three options on the table.
So we're still back to three.
Abe, why don't you have a seat?
So we have the three. Trustee Nasser, were you, do you want to continue?
Yeah, so what I did was, for, for scenarios one, three, and four, was look at the total capacity that we'd be at for each school, and then rank them from least to greatest for each school. And the, the scenario that came out in the middle of all three schools was scenario number four. Scenario number three had Fortson and Dearborn High at the least amount, but Edsel at its greatest amount. And scenario one had Edsel at its least amount, Dearborn in the middle, and Fortson at its max capacity.
Well, in my own mind, I'm weighing school size. I'm weighing cost. I'm also weighing increase in busing, because that's another cost, and it's a physical as well as an economic cost. So all of those are, and I don't, I, I like your idea, Trustee Nasser, of assigning a point system maybe to, to Matrix. So anybody else have any other thoughts on it?
From the information that was sent out to us, we got diagrams of what the boundaries would look like in the four different scenarios. And I don't, I know it's not in the PowerPoint that you're showing us right now, but option four, in my eyes, looks the cleanest.
I agree.
It's all orange, all yellow, or all, looks more gray than black, but we know it was for Edsel. So looking at that, assuming then that numbers are equal, it, I like the look of it.
I do, too.
Just to continuity.
I like the look of it until I see 21 more buses.
No.
No, no.
No, 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 it's not 21 buses, so what's.
It's actually less overall buses, it's just more.
No, it's one more bus.
Transportation, oh, one bus in, oh, those are totals.
We're switching where the buses are.
Okay, one bus increase. Okay, got it.
So Dearborn High would have a lot less buses, Edsel would have a lot more buses.
Yeah, because all of Maples in my neighborhood would be from McCullough-Eunice would be back at Fortson, so they would have no busing, and we have, so you'd just be trading off.
Yeah, so Dear, Dearborn now has 14 buses, and then with, with four, it would go down to four. So those 10 buses plus one more goes to Edsel. So Edsel will have 21 buses.
Mr. Andrews, are you going to opine on whether that's possible to get 21 in there? I do know, and Mr. Mashur also is a veteran of Stout, getting the number of buses in and out of Stout is not, is not a great thing.
No, but out of all the schools that has the room, we'd have to change something in, in the yard where we currently drop the students off and pick them up, but of all three high schools that has the most room and gives us the best option to do that.
Well, you'd have two streets, really, that you could.
There's, there's a few options. You could split them. You could split them, but right now, you could, you have the room and keep them all in the same area behind the school off Rotunda, but you could split them. We, I've already thought about a couple options. I haven't spoken to them with Mr. Casebolt yet.
Mr. Casebolt should have a say on some of this.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because those of us who have been at Stout do understand also that there's another dynamic, which is parent involvement.
You mean at Edsel?
Student, no, at Stout, I mean.
Oh, okay.
When you have students bused into a school who don't live around a school, participation in extracurricular activities declines because students have issues of getting home, or using the library, or whatever. So that, even though, that, that's something else that, that I'll weigh also.
But wait, we're not, we're not changing boundaries for the Stout students, we're changing it for only for at the high school level.
No, no, I'm, but I'm talking about, I, I know from my experience at Stout, trying to get parents involved. If they live seven miles away, they're, they're less likely to come to a PTA meeting than a parent who lives down the street.
Well, I was one of those parents, because I, my, my kids, I live on the east end, and my kids were bused to Stout, both of them, and then went to Edsel. So I understand the, you know, and I never had my kids fully participate, but maybe, you know, that was just me as the parent.
Well, I, I remember chase, their kids chasing a bus, maybe Mr. Mashur remembers this as well, but there was an after-school bus.
Absolutely.
That left Stout on time, even though the bus driver knew that the kids were not all on, and the person probably was annoyed or something, and they left, and those kids were frantic about missing that bus. They ran across the Stout football field, trying to flag down a bus on Rotunda.
I understand that, but since we're talking about Edsel and not Stout, you know, they're not gonna, it's not going to be the same kind of scenario.
Well, I think President Lane was referring to is, okay, so if we put, take Smith out of Edsel Ford, you're taking a lot of people who are walkers currently to Edsel Ford, because now, the only, you wouldn't have, the only walkers you would have would be the Stout kids that live in the Snow Woods area. Those would be the only walkers to Edsel Ford. And I think what she's referring to, and compare, making the comparison to Stout, is that, you know, the more busing you have, the less after-school participation, you know, to some extent, that you're going to have, the less participation you're going you know, to some extent, that you're gonna have, the less participation you're gonna have with, with parents and so on. You know, Mark, Mark Andrews and his team have been, you know, that was one of our concerns, and with some of our students not participating at Dearborn High, that are, that, from, uh, from students that live in Maples, not staying, especially our freshman and sophomore students, that weren't staying after school because they didn't have a ride home. So we got an after-school bus for Dearborn High, and we got two buses for Edsall Ford, for, you know, for a lot of our Salina students, you know, to work with them there.
And Salina has always been, uh, students at, at Stout, I mean, we're not changing.
No, we're not changing Salina, but the big loss would be, would be the students from Smith, which, again.
Right.
Yeah, from Edsall Ford, because you're taking a lot of walk, now, uh, you know, obviously with twenty buses, Edsall Ford is, uh, you know, gonna be predominantly a bus school. So that's, I think, what President Lane is referring to.
And the other thing is, in, in dire economic times, what do we cut? What did we cut?
Transportation.
Transportation.
Yeah.
After-school transportation, so that it was theoretically available to students, and I, I mean, I know coaches that drove kids, but it's not ideal.
No, it's not.
Um, I do want to say, too, that since scenario number four is new, there's a reason why it's new, and that's because they think that it's a feasible option.
Yeah, you know, that was, uh, honestly, how that came about was a couple of things. Number one, I wanted to look at trying to balance the numbers a little bit more, and keeping the splits cleaner. Stout, in my opinion, you have to split it, simply because right now, Stout as a middle school, you're, you're getting kids from everywhere. So to me, it makes sense, when you're looking at the high schools, to split Stout. It's currently split anyway, and it really makes a lot of sense to split it. But as opposed to splitting it three ways, which we currently have, scenario four only splits it two ways. And then, you know, the Woodworth being, because it's such a high enrollment building, uh, splitting Woodworth, again, makes sense, but you keep the elementaries, which, you know, I really like intact, because Henry Ford all goes to Edsall Ford, William Ford all goes to Fortson. So that, you know, it's just, it's just the cleanest of, in my opinion, the cleanest of all the versions that we've had.
I would think having as many of your classmates moving along with you.
Correct.
The better.
Yeah, when I worked with Abe on this, he put heavy emphasis on keeping the school tracks.
Can we hear from, um. Do you guys have anything to say on, on? Yeah, on scenario four?
Don't all rush up here.
Thank you, thank you, trustee Nasser.
Not all at once, no.
I am so glad you called them up here. Mark Andrews and I will go have a seat, and if you have any questions for us.
Stay nearby.
Not all at once, not all at once.
Can I, can I suggest also, can we have a map of what the current, um.
I was just gonna ask that.
Yeah, of what the, of what the current, um, scenario is for our, so that we can hold it up and see the changes side by side with, um, the new maps?
So when, and when I, when the three of us discuss the different scenarios and looking at scenario four, the ultimate goal for the three of us is that there's clear articulation between the feeder track, and the smoothest process available would be the best process for academics and student achievement, because the idea behind it is, if we, through the feeder track model, when we're all following the strategic plan, we all have a base foundation that we're working off of. When we work within our feeder tracks, the idea behind it is that we look at the individualized data of our feeder track, as Mrs. Suora mentioned, and Mrs. Farage, and the School Improvement Plan, to identify within the feeder tracks, where does it need to be a focus? What will help with this scenario is, is the feeder process, specifically the middle school to high school. If we have clear feeders going to the high schools, what ends up happening is that articulation is very smooth and transparent across the board. So however we can get the students to meet that criteria will help us. And, because I know the three of us, our conversations are always based around the data, and in our conversations, I know there's a lot of times where we may have a little bit more emphasis on one feeder track over another in terms of need, based on the student population, so whatever's the cleanest scenario works the best for the three of us. I know I'm speaking for, uh, Dr. Choco and Mrs. Peterson, but we can jump in as well.
Well, I can say that, um, reducing the enrollment, certainly at Dearborn and Fortson, you know, by any numbers, is going to help the congestion at those schools. The plan that offers, um, the cleanest solutions to families, balanced with the needs of transportation and travel for families, seems to be what the board is obviously wrestling with. But when you look at scenario four, the numbers for Dearborn and Fortson certainly are a couple hundred less than where we are now, and I think that's moving in the right direction.
I, I don't have much to add, other than I have been through Fortson and Edsall, looking at space. And, um, the cafeteria at Fortson is really crowded right now, but they have rooms and teachers aren't moving, whereas Dearborn High, teachers are moving twice a day, and that's really, makes it difficult for, to provide the best educational environment for the students. So I agree, if we can reduce the numbers and clean up the feeder tracks. Currently, I work with Bryant, but I have Yunus, Stout, and Smith students that all end up at Dearborn High, and I don't work with those schools at all right now, so it would make it easier.
I also would like to say that I think that the administrators that participated in the last discussion of each of the schools had the, um, the most input, because they're obviously living it, you know, they're managing the flow of students, managing safety, talking with parents, talking with students, and certainly working with teachers, whether they're in carts or whether they're in rooms. So I think that their input, um, is, is extremely valuable.
And one last thing I'd like to add, with, with the transformational leadership over at Edsall Ford and Mr. Casebolt, him and his team, you know, they look forward to the fact of attaining more students. You know, they, they, and it's a positive, it's a great place, so bringing more students over there, it's just going to enhance our district overall, between Fortson, Dearborn High, and Edsall Ford, I mean, there's a clear partnership where they all need to work together, and that feeder program is really gonna make a difference with, through the articulation.
All right, so where does our discussion go from here?
Point clarification, we, we're not looking to make a decision tonight.
No, 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 we're not, yes.
Okay, because, okay, when I saw the numbers, like trustee Thorpe showed us with, uh, number two, where Fortson's gonna be closer to three thousand, I mean, I'm, I'm okay moving past that one. Even though, no matter what we do, Fortson's, Fortson's still gonna be around twenty-seven hundred, give or take.
But they're not in there all day long, so that.
No, I get that part, but I think with, I, I, I understand with the administration and student services trying to do with four, I mean, I would go for it, but that's probably gonna affect most of the families in our city.
That is another factor, is how many people have to change.
Yeah, you've got, I mean, I mean, it's obvious, it's a lot of parents, a lot of families that moved to a certain house, to a certain area they wanted to be in, all of a sudden now we're, so I just want to make sure that we're on track here. We're just having a discussion, continuing the discussion.
Yeah, and I guess we're, we're at the point now, really, basically, of going out and getting our stakeholder, um, we're getting, getting some feedback from the community.
That's gonna be part of the, that's gonna be part of the presentation.
Yeah, trustee Nasser, you were gonna say something.
Yeah, can, can we all agree to eliminate number two?
Yes, I thought we already did that.
Yeah, I think we're, we're past.
Two is off the table.
Now four on the table, yeah, I'm past.
One, three, and four is what we're looking at.
So do we have, um, community discussion dates set?
Yes, so Dr. Maleko.
We have that, uh, coming.
That's gonna be part of the presentation, I believe.
We can have, uh, Mr., we could go right to that right now, if, with Mr. Jaffer and Mr. Mustenan, uh, and then we can go back, Tom, maybe to your section, since we're talk, discussing it.
So we've made some initial, uh, contact with some of the schools, uh, but we were really kind of waiting to finalize a presentation. So we will begin that process of setting up dates and times over the next month or so here to get into the schools. What we'd like to do is go to the high schools and middle schools, and then work with the elementary schools to bring the parents to those buildings, so that way we're not going to every single building, talking to five or six people at a time, it would be more efficient for us, um, and a better dialogue if we had meetings where we could, you know, hopefully get a better turnout of parents at those meetings. But then, uh, along with those community meetings, we also will have, we'll be doing some things to provide, you know, some information on the web, some feedback on the web, some comments, uh, that people can actually just go into Google, you know, there'll be a Google form, they can fill out a little survey, they can provide written comments as well, and then at the meetings, they'll be able to do the same. We also do a video, um, of the presentation that we're giving. We'll do it in English and Arabic and have that up on the web as well. So that way, if parents at any time want to go and check out the presentation, they can go and watch the presentation. Just kind of give, ensure a consistent message across the district as well.
Well, can we be sure that, um, we emphasize to every one of our buildings, I mean, every one, elementary all the way up, because while this is affecting high school students, those are our elementary students at some point, so can we make sure that the PTAs in all the buildings
Oh, yeah.
are, 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 are giving these presentations even regardless of whether you can hit every building, and that the principals are encouraging their parents to go in, on the sites and, and either respond, or at least look at, so that we get as much emphasis to them, to everybody at every level?
We are approaching this as if we are doing a bond campaign. So as much information and as much of a campaign, informational campaign, that we would do in a, for a bond election, to get the word out, is exactly how we're approaching this.
Yeah, because it's not just the high school parents that we need to reach.
Absolutely, and, and make no mistake, this is an awesome responsibility on everybody's shoulders, because we are planning for the future for our district, and recognizing that ultimately it's gonna be the board's decision. You know, David and I will, will, will spearhead this effort on your behest, but rest assured that we want to involve every single community member who's willing to listen to us about what the board is suggesting, and we're gonna emphasize these are proposals. We're gonna solicit their responses, their input, bring it back to you, and then hopefully you'll have a clear and definite, uh, feedback process by the time you make your decision, whether it's January or.
The calendar of meetings will be on the website, but I would, I would urge any board member who wants to attend any of those as well, they can get direct feedback from.
Bring your hard helmets with you.
Exactly, yeah.
Well, quite frankly, having been through this before, uh, we're, we're gonna get a lot of, um, resistance, no matter what solution we choose.
Absolutely, but, but, but understanding, this is an emotional issue.
Yes.
This is pertaining to cultures of the schools. I mean, if we change the culture at Edsall Ford, or Dearborn High, or Fortson, you're gonna have that, that, that throwback, that impact, and that's normal, because each one of you became board members for a reason, right? To make the tough decisions and to lead us in this process, and we appreciate this, and I note collectively, we're gonna share the information. Hopefully, with the community's input, they might come up with some ideas that, you know, will open our eyes, open your eyes to maybe to a better solution, ultimate solution. But we will publish the time schedules, and we will publish the meeting. Actually, today, David and I, uh, with collaboration with the Fortson principal and, uh, staff members, we finalized the, the initial meeting at Fortson for the Fortson PTSA, and we will publish this all on the website.
And she's looking up in the back interestedly. Trustee Nasser?
I think, um, we also need to realize that all the people, or the majority of the people that are coming to these meetings are going to be against.
Yeah, changes.
Well, I mean, everybody wants everything to stay the same, usually.
Yeah, so I don't, I don't mind going to all of them.
Right, but, but we, we need to emphasize one thing. Every kid counts. Every kid counts, and, and making a decision here because it's the best for my kid, and heck with the other kids, you know.
And we also, we have to make a decision. We cannot continue with Dearborn High, uh, students being on a cart. I mean, we have to make a decision on this.
It affects the educational quality.
Yes, exactly.
And I, I appreciate all the efforts, and I really do think this is going to be a very tough decision. I think for all of us, this is not an easy decision. We are constantly affecting people's lives, and it's a tough position to be in. But I do appreciate the fact, uh, that this, that the video on this would also be provided in the Arabic language, and I am assuming as well that the information or the surveys or the comments, would that be available for? Because a lot of the parents still in this community, much of them that do want to give their opinion, don't necessarily speak the English language, and I don't want people to feel like they can't contribute in some way. Is there any way that we could kind of incorporate this to where they could give back their feedback? I know a video would be presented, but maybe even if it's something written that some of us can go through.
David and I spoke about having a link, you know, let's say, when we post the present, the, the film presentation on, on the website, we'll have a link also for people's input. And they can, um, you know, write in, in several languages, not only Arabic, if, if so choose. At, at the end of the day, we will spare no effort to solicit that input, because that's so important to you to have an informed decision with the collective input that we will seek from the community. And ultimately, Abe is next to me, and he'll continue.
No, 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 I just wanted to say, at, at every meeting, we're gonna have a translator there available to articulate in Arabic for people.
Oh, that's, that's great.
So at every meeting, yeah, Minar, Minar's agreed to go to all of them, and she actually just went to a conference where she can do the translation in Arabic as somebody's speaking in English, so there doesn't have to be any delay time, uh, with, with the information being presented.
That's awesome.
Thank you.
It's a pleasure watching you work.
Trustee Thorpe.
So I, you know, in conclusion, you know, you have our commitment to present your wishes to the community, and also you have our commitment to present the community's input back to you, so that you have an informed decision at the end of the day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Thorpe.
Besides the discussion, then, on the boundaries, where do we stand with architectural and?
Mr. Wall's coming up right now. He's a good lead-in, trustee Thorpe.
Thank you, and I just want to brief you up on a few items. Uh, one, I'm a processed individual, so I always like having, thinking ahead of what the process is gonna be. So we're, at some point, gonna have to have a conversation about how if, if, even if we want to, grandfather students into the former high schools, because they could have siblings in there, so that's gonna be an issue that we're gonna have to talk about at some point during the process. Not necessarily tonight, but at some point during the process, because it's gonna have an impact on transportation, class sizes. So those are the things we're gonna have to have a conversation at some point along the way. On the construction side, and also expanding colleges, uh, programs at the college, uh, we met with the college administration last week, uh, talked about just the big picture of it. Uh, I have a follow-up meeting with Mr. Statauski next week on the financial aspect of it. And Ms. Peterson and I also attended one of the, um, I don't know what committee it was, the Oversight Committee for the, one of the early college programs, so we're talking, having those kind of conversations going on now. The architect and on the CM side, they met two weeks ago with Mr. Burke and his team. They met again today. I haven't got an update from today, because I was at the college, so that, that process is moving forward. So they had some discussions this morning about what it would look like, and I know Mr. Burke still had a lot of questions, so we're not anywhere at that point of sharing it, but that process is moving forward.
Is it moving forward, uh, based on the timeline that you had given us before?
Yeah, so we're actually looking at having potentially bids out on the street after the new year. If not sooner, but that's, that's a process we're going through right now. Right now, we're still in the conceptual design, which we kind of have to kind of get squared away before we go any further. And the last page, I won't even bring it up in the slide, it's the same slide as last time we met, just talking about the financial options, that once we get to what our design is, we'll start going through down that avenue.
One of us is gonna win the Lotto, and we're gonna have a tribute.
I'd appreciate that.
I'm so sorry, I have to be excused early. My daughter's really sick, so I just got a text, and I have to go, so excuse me.
Thank you. I'll follow up watching you guys at home.
Wish her all the best.
Okay, so anything else then to, on this conversation? Okay.